Good evening and welcome to night one of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce Candidate Forums for the 2022 General Elections on November 8th. The forums have been made possible once again by Allegheny Media and WFWM. I am Julie McCoy, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and moderating tonight is Jeremy Irons, Chairman of the Chamber's Legislative Committee. Thank you for joining us. We are pleased to use technology to make these forums available virtually and in person. Tonight, we will hear from candidates running for Cumberland City Council. There will be four candidates on the ballot, and all four of them are with us this evening. We have Richard Roxioni, Mary Conlin, James Firstenberg, and Joe George. I will turn things over to Jeremy, who will provide details, and we will begin.
Thank you, Julie, and good evening. Just a couple of housekeeping items. All candidates will be given the same questions and have the same time to answer each question. We will provide a 20-second notice as time is expiring, and we will alternate which candidate answers first. Questions were formulated based on the work and priorities of the chamber with input from the general chamber membership and have not been shared with the candidates in advance. The chamber does not endorse any candidates and is a nonpartisan membership group. With that said, same format as the primaries, so let's go ahead and begin. Our first question, just an opening statement, please tell us about yourself and share one main goal you would like to achieve should you be elected. Thank you. And we'll start with Rock.
Grew up in Cumberland, raised in Cumberland, graduated from Allegheny, went on to West Virginia University. My master's degree is from Frostburg State. I'm married to Susan Squire Sione. She's the reason I ended up staying in Cumberland. I'm a Vietnam veteran, three years in the Army. I've been on city council since 2016. I was elected unanimously by the mayor and the city council at the time to fill a vacancy that had occurred. And then thankfully, in 2018, I ran for election and I'm proud to say that the voters selected me number one, and I've been serving since then. I am currently the Chairman of the Advisory Board for the Salvation Army. I'm also an active member, a very active member, of the Stadium Renovation Committee. You see Greenway Avenue Stadium, that's been something we've been working on as a group, working with some fine citizens in our community that continually give back. I have two children, three grandchildren, and I want to continue the work we've started. I think that our team at City Hall has done things like, in general, torn down more dilapidated properties in the last two years than probably the last 10 in this city. And the reason I mention that as one goal is because what can flow from that is infill, which addresses really one of the number-one problems we have in this city, which is a lack of adequate housing. So those two things go together. I'd like to see the Memorial Hospital grounds, the former hospital, developed into housing, and we think that's going to happen with breaking ground maybe as soon as this summer from what I heard yesterday in a meeting. So that's what I would like to continue to do. And Julie, was that 20 seconds? And I think that one of the things this team at City Hall has done is we've really moved the needle in terms of our city bouncing back, and I think any fair-minded person who knows Cumberland well would have to admit in the last couple of years, things are really looking better. And if you look, Center Street is, North Center Street is a very good example of that. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. My name is Mary Conlin. I too am a lifelong resident of Cumberland, raised here, had my education here, went away for college and studied fine arts. And I am a visual art teacher, a longtime retired, partially retired and returned to elementary school teaching, some kind of a lifelong educator. And I think that's really what I bring as a goal to city council, is the idea that we have many improvements yet to make, we have a lot of new people, we have people who are pretty satisfied in Cumberland, in fact, and want it to be stable and have the pleasant aspects that it has, yet still feel quite disconnected and disengaged from the processes of the city. I had so much as a person I talked to say, can you, if you get elected, can you figure out how we, how does the system work? And I thought, hmm, okay, that's a strange question to make, but what I would like to do as a goal is to start treating the people in our city, the business owners, the head of household taxpayers, people who live in Cumberland pay a tax to do that, and just our residents and families, kind of treating them as our customers, treating them as our partners, making sure that we're upping our game in terms of communication, figuring out what has left them still feeling very disconnected and disengaged, and kind of bringing them along a bit more as we continue on the process of increasing our infrastructure and figuring out our housing problems, our employment problems, et cetera. We need to bring our people with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy?
Hi, I'm Jim Firstenberg. I've got a beautiful wife, five kids, I worked at Coppers, well, three of them are put in college right now, so I'm broke. My vision of the city, well, first of all, I worked at Coppers for 21 years. I now with the state, almost six and a half years, I believe. I train youth on the side for a little sidekick, for free, just to try to show them the ropes and what it's like outside, just football and baseball and this and that, and how to be a little bit more what the kids are today, more grown up and everything. But my vision for the city is the 21st century. We need to make it more safer, number one. I mean, I'm pro-police, pro-FT, pro-fire department, number one. I want a busing downtown, small-city feel but big-city amenities. I want neighborhoods, blight still has to happen, and things around Cumberland happen too slow. I want to be able to help speed that long process along a little faster. I mean, for instance, just a couple of projects going on right now, I'm hoping I'm allowed to see the rest of it end. So basically, that's just that I just want to see more safer streets, cleaner neighborhoods, lot cleaner neighborhoods, affordable housing, but more and more than anything. We need to get rid of the low-income housing, not get rid, but stop there, and we'd need to start having more house, work-based housing. We need more market-based housing, and we need even higher housing than that. I mean, we need, we're losing people every day to Hon Club, excuse me, Hon Club, to over West Virginia or to Pennsylvania every single day. So that's my goal. I want to keep people here and have the young professionals move back and live in Cumberland.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
Thank you, Jimmy. I had three kids that I helped put through college, so I feel your pain. My campaign comes down to really one word, care. I care about Cumberland, I care about the citizens of Cumberland, I care about the future of the city we all love, I care about our kids and grandkids and their future. I care and want to preserve our history and our beautiful surroundings. I care that Cumberland becomes the best that it can be for all of our citizens, and I'll work hard to make that happen. I believe in traditional values, I'm not far-left or far-right. I believe in respecting and listening to everyone's opinion. I believe in the old-fashioned art of compromise. I'm open to new ideas and positive change, and I want to help make that happen. I'll be responsive, creative, a good listener, and a person of action. I've spent a lifetime in customer service, so I know what Mary is talking about, and I work hard at that every day. For those that don't know me, I was appointed to the city council a year ago, selected out of 10 candidates that applied, and I was selected based on my business experience and my leadership role in many nonprofits throughout my career. I'm proud to say that, working with me for a year, I still have the full support of the entire mayor and council. We have a diverse team, and while we don't always agree, we do work well together. I bring a broad business experience to the city, and with the inflation we're facing, higher interest rates, and a recession looming, we need someone with business experience to help see the city through. As President of the Division of a National Company, I've managed large budgets and staffs, and I've worked with businesses, large and small, so I can make a difference. Together, we can solve all these problems that my good friends have raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. For our second question, and this one will start with Mary. In our last forum, we asked opinions of the current and forthcoming projects within the city of Cumberland. Since then, the Rolling Mill project has picked up more speed, bids have come in for Baltimore Street, and there's a myriad of additional projects in the works. Have your thoughts changed, and if so, why?
Well, my opinions have changed. Very little. My opinions have changed very little. I'm glad to see things moving along. I know that things will have to move along because much of the money that we have to spend now has limits and time limits, and if elected, that is certainly something that I would take as a priority to make sure that we're mindful and putting a priority on seeing things through. The only thing that has changed again is that I've talked to more people, and again, I frequently get the sense that they just haven't heard, or their street gets closed and they don't know why. And I just think we could, again, do much more to reconnect with our people through the ways that they communicate now, through things like SMS, through mail connections. I get lots of information in my utility bills, I get none from my water bill, nothing that alerts me, to things like alert services, which our city offers. We should make a reach-out. We need to not simply put things on the website and say, whoa, if you don't know what's going on, check on the website. People nowadays get driven to the website, and that's our responsibility, is to learn how to actually communicate with our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy, same question?
Yeah, from the last forum, we were talking about rolling mills, and I believe they got the siding on and put the sheathing at the bottom. That place, is it, what, we in 12th year now? I don't call that even a number one speed. I mean, that might be the slowest project I've ever seen in my life. I know it's up to the developer now, he has the property, and we have to do something within the city to work with him to get that rolling ahead a little bit more, whatever we could do, whether it be our manpower, to move the telephone poles, or what we have the sidewalks. But like I said just a while ago, I want to be alive to see that thing. I have no idea. Downtown Mall, it needs to be done, no matter what anyone says. It's 1850, 1910, the lines are the ground. I don't know what it is, but to have the option, I mean, to have the third, fourth floor of these apartments, you have to have the water sprinklers, you have to have the broadband, that's a must project, and it, I hope it's beautiful what it's done. Now, with Johnson Heights, my neighborhood, I hope, whatever it is, mixed commercial-use housing, that it fits right in with the area. It's a beautiful neighborhood, a lot of people still know each other there. We cannot, and I'll keep re-stressing, we cannot, we cannot keep, not put low-income housing in areas that don't need to be. So hopefully, that's up in the higher-end range. Same thing with over at Allegheny. That area is a beautiful working area, we need to keep that as well, senior housing maybe, not, nothing at all to where it's, seniors would actually get in their own car garages and leave their cars. They don't need no one there that's, they're able to get and do their own thing, just don't want to cut grass or shovel snow. But the other day, the projects to me, in my time, because the same developers doing rolling mills has done four other projects now, it started three months ago and it's finished them. So I have no idea what the problem is here in Cumberland.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
Certainly, I believe that the downtown Baltimore Street project will be game-changing for the area. The putting in new infrastructure, upgrading broadband, and working with the current businesses downtown, as well as the new developers downtown, and providing Upper Story Residential is going to make a tremendous difference for our city, so I fully support that, and I'm excited for that. One thing I've learned in the last year, working on the city council, is things happen way too slow, whether it's trying to get the grants to fund things, whether it's the engineering, whether it's the construction piece of it, and now we add in the supply chain issues. It's sad, but then we look at the FedEx building that was just constructed by the FedEx people, and they've got that up and almost ready in almost a year. So it can be done, we just have to figure it out. In terms of Mary's question about better communication, certainly, we can do a better job of trying to communicate, but the city of Cumberland is very transparent for our citizens, and in fact, we do have an email system, which is a notify-me, that if we do have your email address, you can get alerts for news releases, street closures, water breaks, as well as there are things on what's happening in downtown Cumberland. But we need to do a better job of capturing the email addresses of our citizens and automatically enrolling them. Currently, they're the ones that have to enroll themselves through the website. So I appreciate what Mary's saying. We have many Facebook pages as well through social media, so there are a tremendous amount of ways, if you'll take the time, to learn the communication from the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Rock?
Rolling Mill, it's totally appropriate for that question, and I didn't know it would be there, although I probably should have guessed it would. I actually met with a friend of mine who doesn't live here, but has worked a long time in real estate and commercial real estate specifically, just this week, and picking his brain as to see what we can do despite the fact that we no longer own the property to get this moving. I think there was a mistake made, I'm going to, I don't know how much a part of that I really was, but we didn't, the city chose not to have a point person that was clearly identified that could stay after the contractor, after the developer, and so I, to tell you the truth, I'm like everybody else up here, I'm very, very frustrated with it, and that's why I consulted with this friend of mine who's been in real estate. He's given me some advice, and he says, he told me this week, we do have some recourse, and I promise the citizens that I'm going to go to the city as early as next week to try to get some of these things enforced, including the things that are in the MOU with the developer that does have timeframes in there, specific timeframes. And I think it's time the city, someone in the city is willing to be the bad guy and start going after the developer to get moving on this project. Steel and these other construction things, they are available other places, so I don't think that's an excuse anymore. I'd like to be able to use it as an excuse, but it can't. You see other things going on. Baltimore Street, I couldn't agree with Joe more, we talk about it all the time, you know, we pray about it all the time, because we do indeed, our team at City Hall believes it is a game-changer. You see the M&amp;T Bank, that's not a pipe dream, that's going to happen. The McMullen Building, that's going to happen. Up at, just up Center Street, you see what's happening up there. When we think of downtown, it's not just Baltimore Street anymore. You go on up Center Street, you see Mr. Mulaney with the Center Street Methodist Church. I think those apartments were all rented before he even was finished with the construction. Things are happening down there, and if you haven't been down there, go down and you'll see that I'm not just blowing smoke and trying to impress you. I wish I could take more credit for it, but you have to slap me if I start saying "me" or "I." It's been a team effort, and I think that people are investing private money downtown, are doing so because of what this team has done and the messages we've been sending about what we want in the way of businesses. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Rock. For our third question, and this question will start with Jimmy. What process should be in place to identify the most appropriate location for services, such as the Union Rescue Mission or certain industries like medical cannabis within the city limits?
The Union Rescue Mission's been a big issue, obviously, for the last, since it came out in the paper, WCBC, for the last two, three weeks, probably. Kind of knew a little bit about it beforehand, some people didn't know, and 100%, 100%, 100% it needed to be moved, but I'm 100% it needed to be moved there. I know for, I just hope everyone did the research, what it does to home values, with everything and that whole deal. I mean, just don't Google it. Actually, you can talk to other towns, and talk to Fredericks, the Heggers towns, you know, everyone, and just, I just thought it was a bad move there. It needed to be moved, but with all the, I'm just sitting here, it's funny, as you've seen, I was just talking about it, you know, property value impact on community, the $700,000 we spent, we gave to them, our tax money. So our taxpayers should have had a process of where this should, you know, they could have been, had like, not a vote, but a town hall, a couple of them, leaned up to let them know, the ARPA's taxpayers, that we took our money out of our city to pay $700,000 to have them move. The cannabis, I find where it's at, I think it's right at Industrial Park. I have no problem with it. I hope that business grows and grows exponentially. Think it's for the medicinal purposes and all that, I think it's a great thing. Back to the mission, I've talked to many people, walked the beaten Braddock in that area, everyone's so very upset with that. And I just think they should have walked in order to door, the city should have sent letters out to them that this could have been this place. But me personally, it, there's a lot of other places. It could have been in Cumberland, could have been Laval, could have been anywhere, but there are some places that wasn't so populated, not around the school area, and we're talking about North Center Street, that leads up to that. And the first thing you see coming to town off 160 at Somerset, we drive in, the first building you see is a Union Rescue Mission, which is not a great sight when your first building you see coming to town. That's it.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
It was a very difficult decision for the relocation of the Union Rescue Mission. It wasn't a difficult decision to take $750,000 of ARPA federal funds that we received as a result of COVID relief to put towards the homeless. We have to take care of our homeless, we don't want them on the streets, sleeping in tent cities and like the pictures that you see on the news. So Pastor Zeiler and that nonprofit group have done a fabulous job trying to take care of our homeless. No matter where you would put the shelter, nobody would want it in their backyard. While I've only been on the council for a year, it's been a project that's undergone for over four years. There was a focus group set up. Unfortunately, during COVID, that group kind of went away for a while, but certainly, there was lots of communication in the newspaper, on the radio, on the website about what was occurring. Could we have done better? Certainly. Would have changed anyone's mind? I don't think so. The tracks kind of separate North End, so I feel for those people that live specifically on North Center Street and Mechanic Street that are closest to the Union Rescue Mission. And we have the commitment from Pastor Zeiler and the board from the Union Rescue Mission that they are going to engage the community over the next two years as it takes to renovate and fix that building. And I know I'll personally be involved to make sure that they deliver on the promises that they make, to be sure that it's going to be a safe and less community impact in that area.
Rock?
It was a very easy decision to grant them, grant money to them from the ARPA money, which is money that the city's got because of the crisis with COVID and so forth and the economy. That was an easy decision because whether we'd like to admit it to ourselves or not, homelessness is a community problem. It's not a government problem, it's not Pastor Zeiler's problem, it's not any Union Rescue Mission's problem. Can I continue, or should I wait? I gotta admit, I'm kind of distracted by that. Can I pause, please?
[inaudible]
Ours is out there.
Rock, can you just tell people that there's an alarm going off?
Oh, I'm sorry, they asked me to announce, we have a car alarm going off in the parking lot. There it goes, there it goes, we're good. Let me see if I can get my thoughts back together. It was an easy decision to grant them the $750,000, $49,000. It is, homelessness is a problem everywhere, we all know that, all you have to do is turn on your television set. It's come to Cumberland maybe later than other places, but it's here, we don't want it to grow, we have little control over that, and Joe is absolutely right, in my opinion. No neighborhood in any community wants a homeless shelter in their neighborhood. We know that. What we would have done to convince those folks, very well-meaning people that came to two meetings, so we did have two meetings, I actually, I can take credit for inviting the first group to the first meeting, because I talked to Mr. D. Archangelis and told him about the meeting, and I said, please have the people come, maybe they'll tell us something that we don't know. Pastor Zeiler, if you believe him, and I certainly do, I've talked to him several times, he is doing the best he possibly can to keep that place safe, and as several of us mentioned during one of the forums in the public meeting, there is nobody around that wants that place to be safer than, safe than him. He has children there, he has family there, and that's just a reality of life in 2022, and I don't want to be smug about that, but it's just a problem. I mean, how would you solve it if someone made you king for the day? These people keep coming for a lot of reasons, and we, as a community, just have to address it.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. Well, I think process is the word there that we need to use. These kinds of situations come up in cities and need to, if there will be growth and improvement. The case of the Union Rescue Mission, I think the communication was clumsy. It would be possible to have alerted the neighborhood, we have a built-in Neighborhood Advisory Commission, even if a neighborhood doesn't have an organized group, the people there can be communicated with directly, there can be a meeting arranged before the rumor mill gets started. And the pastor is a great gentleman, he can defend his program and did so beautifully. If given the chance and given a little bit more control in meetings, I think that he could present himself as a resource to that neighborhood and possibly even convince people to go ahead and maybe give it some time. But this kind of thing is done through information. These people should be given direct, specific information from the Union Rescue Mission about what it means, what the program will look like, what it might change about the neighborhood, maybe even good. Most of the people who came to that meeting first asserted that they already have problems in the neighborhood. The neighborhood has problems, maybe the Union Rescue Mission will become a resource for them. But unfortunately, they were put into a position to first be allowed to open their mouths wide and complain and end up looking like the "not-in-my-backyard" type people, which I don't think they are. I think they just were not given information directly generously without having to go looking or listen to the rumor mill and try to figure out how to do it. And I think we do that with any kind of industry or agency or development that comes in and may be perceived negatively. We have to open up that neighborhood conversation early.
Thank you, Mary. Fourth question, and this one will start with Joe. There were mixed opinions during our last forum regarding communication with constituents from City Hall. If you see this as an issue, what do you propose can be done to fix it?
Thank you, Jeremy. Well, I've addressed that a little. After our forum in the primary, I went to our city administrator and staff and asked, you know, what are all the communication methods that we have available, and got that dialogue going. And certainly, from our administrator's standpoint, he's worked at you know, what are all the communication methods that we have available and got that dialogue going. And certainly, from our administrator's standpoint, he's worked at multiple cities throughout, primarily the state of Pennsylvania during his career and tenure. And he felt that the city of Cumberland was one of the most transparent or the most transparent of any that he has worked with. We do use social media. If you're on Facebook, you can, the city police department has a Facebook page, the city fire department has a Facebook page, there's a Cumberland Historic City Center Facebook page, there's a Constitution Park Facebook page, there's the City of Cumberland Local Government. Of course, we do have the website. There is a visitcumberland.org. You can sign up for email alerts under notify me. And as I mentioned previously, that provides news releases, street closures, water breaks, and other information. But we can do a better job. And as a matter of fact, I just attended yesterday and the day before the Maryland Municipal League Conference in Annapolis. And I attended a seminar on conducting community engagement with an equity focus. And I learned some things and we can improve and I hope to help make that happen.
Thank you, Joe. Rock?
Sorry I missed that signal there. It meant lower it, not lower my voice. Communication is vital to us. We, believe it or not, we talk about are we being transparent enough? And I'm glad Joe remembered that. Mr. Silco, you know, when he was, he heard that from Joe and some others, he remarked all places he's ever been, that we were, we're proud to say that he says we're the most transparent of any city he's ever served in. And I think he's, this is our fifth, his fifth or sixth. So that would be number one. Number two, we have the mayor, and one of the changes is the mayor's on the radio every week. That's something we implemented back when Mr. Morris became mayor. We have public meetings almost every week. We have on Tuesdays, there's always a meeting, a work session or a public meeting with a stated agenda. They're announced by law, they have to be announced in the paper and other sites. So that goes on all the time. I remember the woman that stopped me at the forum, if I'm repeating myself, at, out at Allegheny College, and she was, had that same complaint. And I told her, I listed, I think, five different places that you can get information. She rejected every one of them. She doesn't get a newspaper. She doesn't know how to use the internet. She doesn't get on Facebook. I don't, she just went on and on. I just felt kind of sorry for her. You know, how are we supposed to communicate with that one? Some of the, some of the responsibility, Mary, I have to tell you, rests with residents if they want to be informed. I mean, we have, we put it out there and people have to pay attention. People don't attend our meetings very regularly and they're, they're publicized all the time. They haven't changed, at least since I've been in the city all six and a half years. They're on Tuesdays and they're always announced. By law, they have to be announced.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. Well, I think first of all, there's a difference between transparency and communication. I agree, our city is transparent. We have an excellent website with loads of information. You can spend a lot of time on it, searching and finding minute details and agendas and lots of information. No complaint there. As an educator, I have to say, and I think all public servants need to take that attitude, we don't really have a right to say that they aren't paying attention. If the kid isn't paying attention and we can't communicate with the parents, we don't have a right to say, oh, they don't care enough. We just don't have that right. The job is to get the job done and part of the job is communication. And we need to start to look, I was glad to hear Joe say that he was at the Maryland Municipal League. We need to collaborate with other places and other formats. We need to see how other people do it. But one of the things we need to do is step out of our own way of thinking, which is things like email, really? I would say more than half of our residents, if they're on the alerts on email, they don't look at email. Really? Who looks at email? Lots of people don't look at email. We need to make sure that we reach out to them and say, oh, I think you're on the alerts. Have you looked it over lately? You getting the alerts that you want? Do you need to switch over to SMS so we send you a text instead? We need to reach out to people every so often, maybe every year, maybe every six months, through a format that reaches them directly. I think people now communicate more directly, one-to-one. Social media is not communication. It's used as entertainment. It will not do the job. Only being more direct will do the job and updating and kind of taking more responsibility on our end.
Yeah, I don't know what year it was, 85, 89, that area. They used to have TCI, they used to have the City Hall things on Channel 8. They used to have it on TV. You could watch it. And I remember my grandparents watching that. Now, today's communication, I'm screwed. I had to get my 12-year-old daughter out here to show me what Twitter is and, and all this other stuff. I don't have Facebook. I got my wife's Facebook. I don't know none of that stuff. But that TV, when you get the older crowd, if we still had that Channel 8 and was able to put that out there and have people watch that. And I remember every time that came on, we were watching the city beings. When some people would talk about communication, the ones that don't want to hear is one of the complaints at the end. They're just not, what I'm saying to you is, no, everyone has a complaint at, this side to go there. So I'm not going to try to burn that bridge. But anyway, that would be Twitter, again, what the kids are doing. I mean, you think that communication, that's what, how they communicate, these younger kids, the younger generation, young professionals, or what we're saying is the Twitter, the social, I don't have them all. I can get my 12 to 15 to 19-year-old kids to show me, but I don't know. So again, I think a great idea is put it back on Channel 8 or whatever the weather channel says a thing and have the meetings out live or whenever you have updates, you just put it on there and people will see it. Because mostly, older generations sit around and do that. They watch that stuff. So the younger crowd, they're not even watching this. It's crazy how this world is. They're not even watching this right now. Hopefully, they are and hopefully they can get into this stuff. But that's all I got to say on that. I'm terrible in that part, so.
Thank you, Jimmy. Fifth question, and this question will start with Rock. We touched on it a little bit, going back to housing. There are two sites in the city of Cumberland that are planning for housing, Allegheny High School and the former hospital site. What is your vision for these sites in terms of types of housing and also additional uses?
Let me take Memorial Hospital because that's, that is a city project, in a sense. There is a developer. He has submitted a plan. It's not a complete plan yet. I talked to a gentleman yesterday who is in communication with this developer, who's from the northern Virginia area, by the way, who has a pretty solid track record. And this gentleman apparently is going to be one of the investors. He told me that in terms of apartments, townhouses, that kind of thing, 200 units. And then the added space that's there will be for single-family dwellings. It is not working-class housing or subsidized housing. It is housing intended to meet the needs of places like UPMC, who communicate that need to us all the time. We have known for years that we need to do something about housing. That's a primary site. And we are CEDC, our Economic Development folks, one of them's here back in the room, have been working feverishly on that project. And I'd be surprised, very surprised, if that doesn't happen and happen pretty shortly. Allegheny High School, well, that's a beautiful site up there. That's, I guess it's county. I don't know if the Board of Ed has transferred it to the county or yet, but I know that the county, if you watch the paper and look at the communication the county gives us, you know what's, what their plans are for up there. And it's the same, same setup, no subsidized housing. We don't need any more low-income housing. And it's, the plan, as I understand it from Commissioner Caprilli and Jason Bennett, the county administrator, is something similar to what's at Memorial Hospital, but broader and more extensive. And they're just in the planning stages with that, they've told me. But everybody that I know in office, county, city, all the paid staff, the general staff are on board with doing something really good with both these sites in terms of housing. We have to do it. It's not should we do it, we have to do it.
Thank you, Rock. Mary, same question?
Thank you. Well, I think the housing situation in Cumberland maybe points me to the issue of looking further into the future at city-county collaboration. No matter how much delightful housing we create, we are still going to be at a competitive disadvantage due to taxes. All around us, there are options for housing in the middle to higher-end range. I think we can attract possibly more affluent taxpayers with our downtown developments and some of that kind of housing. I would, would like to see some beautiful units and hope that they'll be invested in and promoted and achieve, you know, the kind of attraction that they should get. And I guess I would only say that my vision would be that these sites would be improved by the fact that their neighborhood locations would seem to be very desirable and very attractive. In other words, will the Allegheny High School site be sitting next to a Big Bear parking lot? Or will we perhaps offer the neighborhood a new playground? Will Memorial Hospital area continue to be a neighborhood that is improving, that is friendly, that has good streets, that feels safe? So, you know, we have to be sure again that we're in touch with our neighbors, in touch with our neighborhoods, and also begin that conversation again, I think, about what kinds of services can we begin to combine with the county before our city is out of sight and too expensive to live in if you're a middle-class person? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy?
I really want both them properties be the best neighborhoods we ever had in this town. I want to keep building up, getting better and go on from there. I hope neighborhoods clean up right beside it going down and just keep building on from there. I don't, again, like Rock said, no more low-income housing. We are the poorest city in the state of Maryland. We do not need no low-income housing. We need to have people to, boy, one day I wish I lived up there and worked their ass off to do it. And, and not only that, we're selling out other neighborhoods. While these two sites are very important, we want to multitask and look at Henderson Avenue, look at Columbia Street, Bellevue Street. We need to look at Gothy Street. We got to multitask and get on these. I mean, we are heading in the wrong direction. We don't want to go down that road if we don't make these right the first time. Because if we just keep on doing the same thing over and over again, we are not bringing any young professionals in here. And again, our town is old and as the older people die off and the younger people leave, we are going to be size of Bedford here in the next 10 years. And it's amazing to me that we haven't started on this 20 years ago. It's not this, this is 20, this is since you and I graduated high school. It's been going on and on. And so these two neighborhoods, when they're done, they're going to be the best two neighborhoods in Cumberland.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
I can't look back in the past. I can only look to the future. And I believe the future is bright. I think the Memorial Hospital site with the existing plans that are being presented now by a developer are exciting. There'll be some green space. Certainly, the areas aren't big enough to have, you know, expansive ballfields and soccer fields and all that kind of stuff, but there will be some green space available. There will be housing that will be tailored towards the millennials and those that don't want big yards and, and lots of maintenance. But there will also be some, some single-family homes and townhomes available. The county is working on, and I talked to Jake Shade today, working on plans for the Allegheny High School, and their visions are similar to what we see for the Memorial Hospital site. But as Jimmy said, if you drive around Cumberland, we have some of the most beautiful homes that, not, not just counting the ones on Washington Street, but on Belvedere, on Park Street, on some other areas, Columbia Street, that when they were built in the early 1900s were, Maryland Avenue, fabulous homes, great views. And so my vision is that we need to expand our current matching grant program for those homes to have people have some assistance from us financially to help renovate those homes. There are some real estate developers, Seth Bernard, who I took his place on council. He has a company that's working to renovate homes and they do a beautiful job. And I think there are a lot of houses that can be done in the city of Cumberland that can be upgraded like that as well as these projects we're talking about.
Thank you, Joe. Question number six, and this question will start with Mary. Falling up from, from the primary forum, during the primary forum, we asked a question regarding the most recent update to the city's economic development plan. And knowing that that plan is the guidepost for, for development and job creation in the city, having had several months to review the changes to the plan, what are your thoughts on the most recent update in the direction, in the direction of future city economic development?
Thank you. Well, if elected, I will do a lot of research on the plan and talk to city staff and try to get a better sense of what the timetable is like on this most recent plan. I really have no changes to my ideas about the plan. I think what we're talking about tonight is what counts. And we have a consultant who has created a study or a plan, but, you know, I think that our elected officials have to be ready to work their plan and give themselves a timetable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Jimmy?
Yeah, about studies, that's another thing that bothers me. You know, we, we have studies for a study for a study. We pay studies for things we already knew. We know, they're right in front of our faces, but we pay people $25,000, $50,000 for studies. So, but the strategic plan, whether it be with the water, I mean, the water thing downtown, it's a beautiful idea. I can't wait that happens. It's going to be a great boost to the economy. I believe so. But I, I'm just talking about studies in general. And when we had the RKS, whatever it was, and I got all that question, I was like, what is this? Everyone knew except me. It was a study. And we automatically do a study for signage somewhere where it's located in the same place. And it blows my mind. So I'm okay with strategic plan and I, I ain't got no really thoughts on that. So, because I don't really know about that and I can't say anymore about that, speak for it. All I just wanted to say was that. Thank you.
Joe?
We need to do a better job working with the CEDC on the strategic plan. We've been talking about having a sit-down meeting with their board and, and Matt and Stu do a tremendous job. But we need to get into the nuts and bolts of the strategic plan and make sure, like as Mary said, that there is a timeframe involved. Certainly, I believe that bringing science, technology, engineering and math experts into the area that are able to telecommute, you know, once we have the housing situation addressed, will help move our economy forward. Outdoor recreation certainly will bring jobs. Coordinating outdoor recreation that we currently have with manufacturers that work directly with outdoor recreation could bring additional jobs to our area. So there are a lot of good ideas, but like anything else, it takes somebody to work hard to make those into a reality and, and timeframes and accountability are certainly part of that.
Thank you, Joe. Rock?
Jimmy, don't feel too bad about the plan. I had it explained to me many times at meetings with the, the city planner who did it, who's a wonderful man and very, very bright and has had successful projects. But some of it was tough for a layperson to understand. Essentially, it has to do, and the first thing I'd like to say is, you're right. This city and other cities do have a history of spending money on plans and then they get put on a shelf somewhere. I think this administration at least gets credit for saying, no, we want that down off the shelf. And Matt Miller and the CEDC are responsible for that. They sponsored the gentleman to come and to review the plan and to tell us what the next steps are. What it has to do with, it has to do a lot with how to access downtown, how that would change in terms of the roads, the streets that would come downtown. In particular, how we connect the downtown more to the area over Martins, which hopefully is going to be developed, that big property over there in my lifetime, Jimmy. That's, that's kind of what the plan is. It includes, I don't know if I should bring this up again, it includes the Union Rescue Mission and that site. Part of the plan is that area over there by the train station would be a transportation hub. So tourist buses, for instance, would gather there, not in its present condition, but as part of the plan, all of that would be developed and redeveloped. That's what, that's what the RKG plan is. Again, I'm Again, I want to emphasize, our administration brought it off the shelf and said, we're not going to spend that kind of money. And you're right, they can be expensive. We're not going to spend that money and just put it on a shelf. We brought it down, and the CEDC, Stu's back there, Matt, thanks to those guys, we had those additional meetings, and it's exciting. But like anything else, it's also very, very expensive. And so, I guess one of the next big steps is where CEDC and the city continue to find ways to fund a project. It's a huge project. Thank you.
Thank you, Rock. Question number seven, and we'll start with Jimmy. And related to the previous questions, we've covered a number of topics as far as housing, as far as job creation, economic development projects, that sort of thing. But just, and this is just a one-minute answer, but just personally, we've talked about all these broad things. What is your measure of success for the city of Cumberland?
I know I talk about kids a lot, and it's about our youth. We're forgetting that. We want them to have what some of us grew up having. Cumberland was a queen city one time, and it was a beautiful city, still is a beautiful city. You come through the mountains, you get off some streets, you see, you know, your head scratch, you know, you just left vacation, you come home, you're going, geez, I came to this, look at this. It can be cleaned up, but I see it bussing downtown. I see businesses out on the highway, whether it be Staples, I mean, excuse me, whatever, any restaurants, any shopping centers. I see a diverse city, more restaurants. I see 21st century stuff, we're still with the architecture we have. I see young professionals and doctors wanting to live here instead of work, living here seven days a week and moving away and come back, you know, just because they're all moving. I want young professionals to stay and live here, and I want this to be the queen city again. I want to be one of the top cities in the state of Maryland, and that's what I will try to fight to do.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
I think part of the measure of success is excitement within the city, and certainly we're seeing that now with the North Center Street corridor and all that's being done there with the restaurants and the carnivals and festivals and flea markets and things that are happening there. We're seeing that with the reinvestment by outside as well as, and it's exciting that we have folks like Mr. Hendershot and Mr. Egan to invest in McMullen Building and the renamed Rosenbaum Building. The investments that are starting to occur in the buildings that are being acquired downtown, that's the measure of success, is our citizens enjoying the fruits of their labor.
First thing that comes to my mind now, the advantage as Joe was talking to John, some notes down, I said earlier, housing is a huge need in our community, and it's so connected to other things. If UPMC, who's now our biggest employer, is saying, we need more housing and better housing so we can attract more professionals, well, that kills a couple birds with one stone. And so, the housing thing is a huge deal. So, what is my measure of success? To have Memorial Hospital, that site done, to have Rolling Mill done. We have the new site over at Old Eastside School. Those apartments are full. I think they were filled before the place was even finally constructed. The Allegheny Site, which people mentioned, Messick Road Site, which some people might know about, the collaboration with the county, which another would be another symbol of success for me. We, as a group, have increased with, certainly with the county's cooperation, the cooperation with the county and collaboration with the county to purchase a piece of property on Messick Road, which is already, looks like it's going to be rented once that property is prepared. The county working with us to help provide money more for downtown, for businesses to revitalize themselves. And the improvements, one of the areas that...
That's one minute.
Am I done?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see the, pardon me.
We'll give you another opportunity to finish your thoughts.
If it's not my microphone, it's not paying attention.
Mary?
Well, I'll give you the schoolteacher answer first. The measure of success must always be a visible product. It doesn't have to be the gigantic product. You take your big goal and you break it down into little building blocks, whether that's Black Top on Fayette Street, or maybe a new tree planted, or a better crosswalk on Green Street. It's things that people can see and use, of course. I think we all agree and understand that. I think we get to that through, again, the collaboration with all levels of government and all city elected officials involved in that kind of collaboration, whether it's going downstate to a conference, whether it's working with elected officials in the county. We need that collaboration to see our success. We need to make it visible to our people. Downtown is wonderful, but maybe a fourth of the people eat in those restaurants and go there. We need to keep our eye on the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Eighth question, and this one, we'll start with Joe. Obviously, this is a chamber forum, so many of the topics have been on economic development, job creation, those types of things. But outside of those two items, if elected, what would be your primary goal or focus for improvement in the city? What's your passion? What's your primary platform outside of job creation and economic development?
I think, and we're working towards that, but we can do a better job. My key proposal is that we need to speak as one voice. We, as the county, we, as the city of Cumberland, we, as the Board of Education, we, as the municipalities of Frostburg, Westernport, Lona Coning, Mount Savage, and on and on, need to work together to help develop our priorities as a region, because together as one voice, we can accomplish a lot more with working with the federal and state folks down the road to secure funds for the things that we want to do in this area. And certainly, we have the advantage of the new George Edwards Fund, and that will be an exciting shot in the arm for us. But again, it requires a collaboration of working together, and so, I'll continue to be that voice to try and make sure that that continues and grows and improves even further in the future.
Just to piggyback on what Joe said, if you're an older person, you know, people have clamored for the county and the city to collaborate more. They don't have to agree on everything, but collaboration is really what is needed. I'm big on partnerships, and I like the trend that, I don't think the city can take entire credit for it. Certainly, we have our partners and friends at the county. They're seeing the need and understand, maybe more than previous administrations did or staff did at the county, that collaborating with the city is a good thing for everybody. It may have been Commissioner Valentine had told me one time that if the city thrives, the county benefits from that, too. So, that only makes sense to me. The other thing that hasn't been mentioned, that I really have a big, because my colleagues allowed me to do this, one of the things I've really worked on is parks and recreation. If you're really aware, you know that in the last 10 or 12 years, parks and recreation in our city has fallen, fell off the radar almost completely, and that's not an exaggeration. And our new city administrator, as soon as he came to town, the first thing I did was take him to Constitution Park. He's thanked me three times for that, and he's called it a gem, because he knows that the current trend in trying to improve economic development includes attention to parks and recreation and green space. Young people are looking for things. We have the hiking trails. We have, if you've been to Constitution Park lately, there's already some improvements, and with the backing of the city council and the staff at the city, I have really pushed for more money, and there is more money going into the park, and you'll see a lot of improvements up there. And that is economic development, and it is improving the quality of life in our city.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Thank you. I think my focus would remain on the idea that we have to really keep our eyes on the whole city, on the satellite neighborhoods, and on the idea of kind of reigniting a little bit of neighborhood organization. We can do that through the initiative in the city charter, but, you know, it has to be something that we incentivize and that we really focus on to keep that spirit of the city up. I think that my goal, and more and more, it's another thing, I'm like Rock, I'm almost afraid to say it. My late father, Tom Conlon, who was the mayor of Cumberland at one time, I'll just go ahead and say it, believed absolutely that consolidation of the city and county were necessary. I think that if I were to be elected, one of my primary goals would be to start a new plan, because it would have to be a big and long-term plan, the kind that we really like. But a new plan to actually address that, to professionally start to look at what could be consolidated sooner, what could be consolidated later, what would that end product look like, and start to reorganize really the services, the public safety agencies and services within that, to really start to look at those and begin consolidating some of them. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Me personally, besides economic and job creation, number one is the drug and crime that has to be taken care of. While we're trying to do all this and that, we have to take, nip this in the butt, you know, for these neighborhoods to actually, someone come in and want to do things to them. But again, she said earlier, transparency, we need to be more transparent. We need to let people know, apologize. I love to see a more diverse town. I mean, like I said, we talked about restaurants, diversity, things like that, work with colleges more. I mean, I think the colleges could help us out so much. And the biggest thing to me is the crime and the drug problem we have here. And I sound like a Debbie Downer, and I walk those streets every single evening, and there's always an ambulance, there's always a police car in the neighborhood on that, regardless of what neighborhood it is. And so, I know it's job, it's not job creation, and it's not economic development, but to take care of the fire department, police department is my number one goal, to have trained professionals do their job right and have the best equipment available to them. And that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yep, you started that question. Final question here, and we'll move on to a closing statement. You guys have two minutes as far as your closing statement, if you wanted to go back and touch on the topics, but those are your two minutes as far as closing statement. And we will start with Rock.
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and thanks to all the voters who've supported me since 2018. It's very humbling. It's a privilege to serve the city that we all love. In my heart, I truly believe our city's bouncing back. That's not just smoke. I've seen it. I see the private investment, the increase, just the increased interest in private investment since 2016, when I went to City Hall, is incredible, and especially incredible when you consider two years of COVID. Crime is a problem in every city in America, there's no doubt about it. So, this city council, this team, has supported our chief and the officers with pay increases, premium pay, increased their vehicle fleet. I think Chief Turner, if he was here, would tell you, anything they've asked for, we have tried to provide that. Same with the fire department. If you see the paper this week, the chief, Adams, has came before us last week talking about upgrading equipment. We're all on board with that. Public safety is number one. That's the number-one job of a city, is to take care of its citizens, protect its citizens. I think the police department and C3I, working with the sheriff's department, are doing as much as they can around the drug problem. It's humongous. You talk to them, and I don't know how they do what they do, the amount of drugs that are being trafficked in our area. So, that'll always be a priority for us in this particular city council team. The cooperation with the county remains high on my list of things to continue to promote in whatever way I'm able to do that. And look, I don't want to, I can't overemphasize the importance of what we're doing with blighted properties, because tearing them down has everything to do with infill and housing and people coming in to buy up these beautiful homes that Jimmy and Joe referred to. You got to get the stuff down that's next door for those people to show interest in them, and that is happening, and I'm really proud that we have torn down more of those properties in the last two years than probably in the previous 10. I appreciate your vote. I thank the chamber very much for hosting us again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rock. Mary?
Well, thanks, everyone, for coming tonight, and again, for our hosts and our beautiful new county library where we're holding this wonderful event, beautiful facility. I think I'm running for city council mainly because what I continue to hear is that Cumberland is a safe, beautiful, and desirable place to be. It has problems. They're not the terrible problems of a growth situation. They're the opposite. That's something that many small towns have, and I think, you know, we need to continue working on all of those things, such as blighted property, street conditions, public safety. I think what we need to do, and my firm belief will be, to be more of a voice and a very available representative to people, over necessarily being a team player. I'm a person of opinion, and I like to get my own information, and will do so, and will participate very actively and in a very informed way in every issue that comes before the council, and will continue to do that even if not elected, as I've become very interested in some issues now that I've learned more about over the period of this electoral race. So, you know, I have many places where I could become activated in the city, but I just feel that we need more of a variety of voices. We need more eyes on the people and less on the projects and the processes. We need to get to know our people again. The pandemic was something that set that back, and yet, perhaps Cumberland will look back on the pandemic as a turning point, even as a transformational point, and with some of the influx of monies and programs that we can now take advantage of if we choose to really push that, we should make this a transformational moment, and I would love to be involved in that. Thank you.
Jimmy?
Sounds cliche. I love Cumberland. I really do. And I'm not seeing the same thing everyone else is. I'm not seeing the 19, I know where we're at, this and that, COVID, this and that. I don't see the same people here. I don't recognize the same people here. It's over and over again. We're not that hometown feeling everyone wants to say we are. But let me tell you something, I'm upbeat. I've got a lot of energy, as everyone can tell and hear me. Sometimes I'm on the long. But, you know, I'm not scared to make the call, you know. I don't go along to get along. I will fight for our citizens, and no one, and I say this 100 times, cannot work me, or I say that, probably, but listen, when I played sports, I always, Hagerstown, Martinsburg, and Morgantown, and Al Tudor, competitors of mine, and we played them in any sport, whether football, baseball, basketball, I wanted to kick your ass. Now, as I get older, and I'm getting into this, I want to be in housing, I want to be in business, I want to be in shopping, and I, like I said, we will be the queen city again. I just appreciate everyone coming out listening, and I need your vote, November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. Joe?
Thank you, Jeremy. Thank you to the chamber, and thank you to all the candidates here for their interest in making the city of Cumberland better. I know we'll be in good hands, no matter who gets elected, but certainly, I hope I'm one of those. I certainly back the blue and black, back the fire department. I think that's what helps separate the city of Cumberland, is having a tremendous fire and police department who's very responsive, very community-focused. I'm not afraid to challenge our great city staff and ask the questions and make sure that they do their best to try and improve. I believe that we need to improve in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and in our discussions with the community. Yes, yes, we can do a better job at that, but I believe that this mayor and city council have been moving in the right direction. I think there's a lot of positive things happening in the city. I'm a family man, a man of faith, you know, kind of a humble, quiet guy, but I want to get things done and know how to do it, and I've been very blessed over the course of my life with business experience, with traveling across the country, with seeing things from a different perspective. a different perspective, and at the same time, being a lifetime of customer service. And that's what city council is all about, serving our citizens. I believe experience matters, and I ask that the voters must decide, of the four of us, who has the best chance to work with the federal and state legislators and county legislators to get things done and get funds for our area, which is ultimately what's going to make the difference for our citizens. So I hope you'll vote for the guy with three first names, Joseph Paul George. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And on behalf of the chamber, I'd like to thank Ryan Brenneman at Allegheny Media and to Chuck Dickin at WFWM for their partnership with this event, and also thank you to our director, Julie, for her expertise and all of her hard work putting this together. These forums will be replayed, in addition to being available on the chamber's Facebook and YouTube page, they will also be replayed on WFWM. And this forum will be replayed on Tuesday, October 25th at 5:00 PM, 6:00 PM, I'm sorry. So it will be replayed again on Tuesday, October 25th at 6:00 PM. Thank you to the candidates for joining us tonight, and we wish you all luck. Early voting begins Thursday, October 27th, and will run through Thursday, November 5th. Election Day is Tuesday, November 8th, and you must vote at your assigned polling place. You can find all this information at elections.maryland.gov. The Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce encourages everyone to vote and to make informed decisions. Thank you for joining us. Good night.